Welcome to the County Commissioner Candidate Forum sponsored by the Athens Public Library and the Athens County League of Women Voters. This is an important event in helping to provide information for the election in terms of an informed electorate. Tonight we will hear from two candidates, Chris Schmeele and Randy Mace. Let me review the ground rules for this evening's forum. They were sent to the candidates prior to this evening. Each candidate will have three minutes to make an introductory statement. The order was determined by Lot just prior to the forum. The first statement will be presented by Mr. Schmeele, followed by Mr. Mace. Questions will then be put to the candidates by a panel of representatives of the media. The media representatives will each ask one question. The order of their questioning has also been determined by Lot earlier this evening. The order will be, the first questioner will be David DeWitt from the Athens News, followed by Sarah Brumfield from the Athens Messenger. Each candidate will have one and one-half minutes to respond to each question. The first respondent is the candidate who made the first introductory statement. Thereafter, the first respondent to each question will alternate between the candidates, starting with the candidate who responded second to the previous question. For example, it will be Mr. Schmeele, then Mr. Mace for the first question, then Mr. Mace and Mr. Schmeele for the second question. Should other representatives of the media appear tonight, then those individuals will be added but alternating each time. Following questions from the media panel, we will present questions from the audience. Again, candidates will have up to one and one-half minutes to respond to each question. Questions should be written so that they might be answered by each of the candidates. Audience members are encouraged to submit questions, otherwise this evening will end very, very quickly. Each question will be reviewed by two people to ensure that there are no repeat questions and that the question can be answered by both candidates. Our intent is for a balanced and educational program. If we run out of questions from the audience, media panel members may ask another question. Each candidate will finally have the opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement. We will now begin the opening statements. As indicated, Mr. Schmeele will make the first statement, followed by Mr. Mace. Thank you.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting, and I want to thank all of you residents for coming to hear about your choice for county commissioner. My name's Chris Schmeele. I'm 42 years old, and I'm married to my wife, Michelle Gorman, of 18 years, and I have a son, Griffin, he's 10, and Hazel, seven, and they both attend Alexander Elementary School. I came to Ohio University in 1988, and I was in the university college. I made my own major, the Bachelor of General Studies, and my program was called Holistic Transition to Sustainability. After college, Michelle and I traveled around the country, and we're looking for a place to settle down, but we came back to Athens because of the great community that we felt was here. And we were lucky enough to buy a small 17-acre piece of property in Alexander Township. It was a fixer-upper, had a bunch of trash piles on it. We cleaned up the trash, lived in a little eight-by-35 trailer that was on-site as we designed and built our dream home. We took tires from the trash pile and filled them up with dirt, and they were rammed earth tires. We used about 400 tires in our foundation. We bought local lumber from Meeks Lumber. We cut some trees down off our own property, and these are all the things that went into a passive solar house. We heat with wood, on-demand hot water heater, very energy-efficient, keeps our cost of living quite affordable. At the same time as we were building our house, we also started our business called Integration Acres. Primarily, we were focusing on the pawpaw at first, and the pawpaw is a great native fruit, a great natural resource to our area, and it was just rotting on the ground. And we took the pawpaw, and we've turned it into thousands and thousands of dollars for not only our company but for people in our community. We buy pawpaws from other people. And now we're the world's largest pawpaw processors. And we, also, about the same time, we started the Ohio Pawpaw Festival back in 1999. We worked with the Albany Business and Community Development Organization to get that started, and now we've been going for 14 years. And this year, we had about 8,000 people, and we estimate around quarter of a million dollars in economic activity occurred in 48 hours. All that money, a lot of it going to local businesses and in our community. We also have goat dairy. We're one of the largest farmstead goat dairies in the state. We have three full-time employees and several seasonal employees. I've shown in my personal life that by being creative, hard-working, and community-minded, it can lead to success, and I hope to bring that mindset and work ethic to the Athens County Government. So I'd appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Sorry. Am I ready? Okay, thank you. Hello, I guess you figured out by now, my name is Randy Mace, and I'm running for commissioner. As far as my background, I'm a lifelong resident of Athens County. Was called from retirement to know if I'd run for commissioner. I retired after spending 20 years with, starting and developing 911 for the county. Before that, I spent about 15 years as the emergency management, now Homeland Security Director. Before that, among other things, in 1973, I started with something called SEEM, Southeast Ohio EMS. I started as an EMT in Nelsonville in 1973. In the space of a few years, I ended up running that organization with a staff of 300 full and part-time people, and a budget in current dollars of about $7 million. Back then, it was a million and a half, so we've had a bit of inflation. I was born in Athens, raised in Marshfield. My wife and I, Carol, have lived on Radford Road for 30-some years. We have a 28-year-old daughter, Rachel, who works at Tri-County Mental Health. I graduated from Alexander and OU. My daughter graduated from Alexander and OU, actually Athens and OU. My wife's an Athens graduate as well, and she's from the area as well. I've got some more time, okay, I'm about out of time. I'll save that, and I'll save the rest of it for later. Thanks.
Thank you. One additional representative from the media has arrived, and he chose number two, so the order for the media questions will be David DeWitt from the Athens News, Alan Smith from the Post, and then Sarah Brumfield from the Athens Messenger. It is now time for questions from the media.
Thank you, Anina. One of the biggest roles of county commissioner is dealing with the budget and how it's allocated. Now, looking at, part of dealing with that budget is how much money comes from the state and local government funds. And looking at fluctuations throughout the past couple of years, it was 852,000 in 2010, 658,000 in 2011, 730,000 in 2012, that's the certified amounts. And my question is, as you face these types of fluctuations in the budget, what would be your priorities, and could you also define what would be essential services? Thank you.
Well, the essential services are sheriff, EMS, all these things to protect the citizens that we have to do statutorily. I would also like to focus some of our budgetary money on energy efficiency so that we can reduce our long-term costs.
Sorry, Chris.
And, you know, we've seen the city of Athens do that, we've seen Ohio University do that, and I think that we can actually do it without spending a bunch of money, so we can just start saving some money. And besides that, I think we need to listen to the voters and make sure that, you know, we're meeting all the needs that we're hearing from our constituents.
Thanks to my cellphone, could you, okay, the first one was priorities?
Yeah, as you look at the budget and deal with fluctuations, what would be your priorities and how would you define essential services?
Okay. What would be my priorities? The first thing that I need, I think we need to do is keep the lights on. I think that money, the state has pretty much said they're going to phase that local government funding out, which means that we're going to get tighter and tighter and tighter. I think that, exactly, I mean, I've spent my life working emergency services, so EMS is certainly my baby. I want to see us have that maintained. Again, as he said with the sheriff, I want to see that we have the vehicles. I'd like to see us institute a program of replacing vehicles at a given time rather than running up against walls and finding out that we don't have money to buy them. As I say, keeping the lights on, keeping employment stable with the county employees, making sure there are enough people, when you come in to record your deed or get your dog license, that there's enough people there to do it, and let those people know that they're going to have jobs in the future. Other priorities, 30 seconds, okay. Well, the one, the other one I'll mention is making sure we're taking care of our veterans, and there are several more that I can get to, but I think I'm about to be out of time.
Mr. Smith, when the microphone reaches you, and then Mr. Mace will answer first.
What are your thoughts on fracking in Athens County?
Very simple, straightforward. As you probably know, fracking is largely handled by ODNR. I am a total supporter of private property landowners' freedom to use their land as long as your unreimbursed damages caused by their neighbors' activities. Basically, I'm in, I hope that that comes to us, I hope that we get to develop the resources that are here because this area needs jobs, this area needs money. I hope to see that come about. I do want to make sure that we do it absolutely correctly. I want to see full water testing ahead of time. I want to see that we are making sure that the casings are properly installed, that the wells are properly monitored, because everything I've seen where there's been damage from that drilling is because of sloppy practices. The one thing that doesn't concern me is injection wells. It concerns me that it's cost-effective to bring trucks of stuff in here from Texas and Pennsylvania. I think we have to really have a look at that and find out what all those implications are, and I'll stop there.
If this deep horizontal hydraulic fracking is economically feasible and it starts to happen in this county, then yeah, we need to make sure that we protect the environment and the health of our citizens first and foremost. And if people are going to be signing leases, I want to encourage our citizens to get with landowner groups so that they make as much money as possible, because you're signing a deal with the devil kind of, you know what I mean? So if you're with a landowners group, you can get a lot more support and resources, and they can put into these leases terms that they feel comfortable with. Because a lot of people, you know, have jumped the gun, they don't even think about it, they're just excited about the money. I don't think that's the right way to do things. So, and most of all, if we're going to be extracting all these resources, we want to create or keep as much of that wealth in our community as possible. So, you know, we got to just make the best of it if it does happen and minimize the negatives. And yeah, the injection wells are scary. We've got the perfect formation of limestone for these injection wells, and as a dairy farmer, I'm actually inspected more by the state than injection wells. Every month, I have an inspector at my facility, my milk gets tested, my cheese gets tested. These trucks show up out of nowhere, and I just heard last night somebody has seen a truck show up to the Ladridge site.
The third questioner from the media panel is Sarah Brumfield from the Athens Messenger.
Hi. What do you think the commissioner's role is in economic development?
Mr. Schmeele answers first.
The commissioners work mainly with the Economic Development Council, and that is, got representatives from the county, the city, the universities, and, you know, they spend a lot of time trying to attract businesses from outside the area. Recently, the CGI has committed to creating 150 jobs, and I heard that they're going to create another 150 jobs in a couple of years. So I think that's awesome. I do feel like I can bring, because I am a local businessperson and I'm pretty well networked with other businesspeople, that I feel like a lot of our local businesspeople aren't aware of the EDC and how they can participate. So I personally would like to be the ambassador for that. Throw out Art O'Stryke from Jackie O's. He's putting $500,000 into a facility and creating 12 jobs. He doesn't even know about this. And, you know, a lot of times they say, "Well, local people, local businesses don't want to do the paperwork." We need to make sure that the paperwork is doable and easy for our local businesspeople. Because, you know, it's been a long time since we've attracted a big out-of-town company, so I personally feel like we need to work on the sectors that we've got some strengths in. The local food economy is one, renewable energy, biotech, tourism, and the arts. These are all things that, you know, we can patch together, and it leads to a great quality of life for us, too.
Well, the first thing I want to talk about with economic development is taking care of the businesses we have. I think that's one thing that too often gets overlooked in economic development, so I want to make sure we do that. I don't think, you know, like Chris said, I don't think, well, he said we haven't had one, but I don't think we're likely to see 500, 600, 700-job factories move in, there just aren't that many out there. What I think we need to concentrate on is having a number of, whether, whatever number it be, of 10 or 20 people, businesses, and I think, as Chris said, I'm just blown away by the food industry that we have down here. Until I got involved with this race, I really did not appreciate that, and I've gone to all their events. I think that's great. Like I say, I think we need, I'd rather have, you know, 10 businesses with 10 jobs than one with 100, because those are the types of places that, like TS Trim, they're here for a while, and all of a sudden they get a better offer up the road and they're gone. That timing card just intimidates me totally. I want to work with the EDC, and in 15 seconds, one thing I found out in doing a lot of transports of people to Columbus Airport is, that's a golden time to meet somebody at the airport, bring them home, and talk to them as we bring them down here. So I think time's about to run out.
Thank you, and thank you to the panel from the media for your questions at this point. We're now moving to questions from the audience. The rotation that has been established will continue, and so Mr. Mace will answer the first question, followed by Mr. Schmeele. What is your position on Athens County taking over the gun range at Stroud's Run? Specifically, should the sheriff control it?
Can I be first, okay?
Yes.
Certainly not until we deal with the question of lead and EPA concerns out there. We don't want to end up with something that's going to cost us a zillion dollars down the road like the landfill did. I would like to see the state do it. I don't think the state's interested in doing it. Right now, I think there's not enough information to make a decision. I would rather see us go some other direction. I guess that's about as much as I have to say about it.
Do you need me to repeat the question?
No. I think, yeah, the EPA liabilities are a very important question that needs to be answered, but I think I just read a new article that said that the state is actually interested in possibly refurbishing it.
Good.
They're going to move the trajectory so that it wasn't shooting towards a stream to try to help deal with some of the environmental concerns. They were going to put a fence around it so that, you know, drunk college kids can't go out there and blow up televisions, and so, and it sounded like it would be open to the public, but it would also be open to law enforcement. So I guess it comes down to asking the sheriff, you know, if that would suffice for him or not, so that's my two cents.
Thank you. The second question, and this will be answered by Mr. Schmeele first, and then Mr. Mace. Do you have any idea where cuts can be made or money saved in the budgets for various county offices?
I have some ideas, but they're, I would say, vague. I think I would like to sit down with the different agencies and the department heads and ask them. They're obviously spent years in those positions, and, you know, I wouldn't want to assume, I'm a know-it-all kind of guy that was going to come in and, you know, fix all these problems that I'm not really, you know, that educated on, so I would like to work with the people in those departments. You know, we've heard talk about how we have a lot of buildings that maybe aren't being used efficiently, so maybe, you know, the shuffling around of some of our departments to maximize our efficiency of buildings, I think would be a great way. I think besides that, you know, I'd like to sit down at the table and say, "What can we do here?"
Mr. Mace, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, no, thank you. Not being in the office, obviously, there are pieces that we don't see, but I do look for them. I was misquoted earlier that I wanted to cut staff in the commissioner's office, but what I said was that in the commission meetings that I've gone to ever since I started running for office, there are two people who come in and do clerk-type activities, and I said I noticed that when one of them's on vacation or is out sick, that they don't bring another person in, which makes me think that maybe that second person at a meeting could be doing something else. Sorry, Lenny, if I'm stepping on toes, because I'm not in your office, but that's the sort of thing I'm looking for. I see money spent by certain agencies to buy materials for KidFest, that I think that money needs to be at least diverted to the dairy program to bring it into the classroom rather than at KidFest. There's just, you know, lots of little things out there, but lots of little things soon become a big thing, and I just think that we need to look for every piece of it. I could go on, but I'm about to run out of time again, so.
The third question, first response will be Mr. Mace, then Mr. Schmeele. The current EMS offices is in what used to be a closet in a building in the plains. What do you think should be done about more space for it? And I'm assuming the "it" refers to EMS, not the closet.
Yeah, they definitely need, they definitely need something done. I hope I'm not stepping on toes here, I don't think I am. I know Holzer has offered the county possibly room for a new station at their site, and again, not being inside, I think we might look at that as a possible to locate the station with the offices down there. That's probably my first, my first recommendation until I know more.
Mr. Schmeele?
Well, you know, there's talk about, we've got different buildings around the county that we might not be using efficiently, so I think we do have some assets that we can look at of our own, if we can maybe put a plea out to the community, like, yeah, maybe like Holzer, or maybe there's other places that would be interested in, you know, housing the station. So I guess anything's better than a closet.
And they're right, I've been in that closet.
Thank you. Question number four, do y'all have the rotation down okay without me? What would you do if you saw another office misusing county-public funds, like the recent problems in the sheriff's office?
Well, I'm a kind of person that I'm not afraid to go and sit and talk to somebody and say, "Hey, what's going on? You're, you know, this is in the paper. You're, you know, if you're, you know, you're representing our citizens, and this isn't looking good, so what's going on? I want to find out, and how are we going to fix this problem?" So, yeah, it's, you know, as, you know, not just, you know, the example of the sheriff, but this has come up before, and especially if I'm a Democrat and Democrats in my party are doing it, I mean, I feel a little stronger about being able to go in there and say, "Hey, buddy, you know, you're making us look bad." You know, and, right, you're going to get, there's audits, there's, you know, it's like, you're not going to get away with anything here, so, and I don't think, I don't think the sheriff was trying to get away with anything, so, but yeah, that's what I'd do.
I think it's premature to talk about the sheriff's problems or not problems or whatever's going on. That still, that still seems to be a matter of study at this point. I could go back to a recent situation where one of the office holders wanted to pay overtime to all of his people as he exited the building, as it were. I commend what the commissioners did at that point by limiting his budget. I would certainly do the same thing, and, you know, to whatever extent that I was able to legally, I would starve the money until the problem was resolved. And if that didn't happen, the commissioners still have the bully pulpit for the county, and I would hopefully work with these folks to make sure that we bring people to heel, for a bad, bad way to speak of it probably, but I, you know, we can't afford to be doing silly things with money, because the money, you know, the government runs on money and we don't have enough. We don't have any rainy day fund right now, and that has to be rebuilt, so I'll stop there.
Question number five, to Mr. Mace to begin. How important is party affiliation at the local office level?
Well, if it were really important, I probably wouldn't have been last to run, because I've never been a strong party person. I'm a policy person. I don't think it's all that important. I don't think we line up on party votes and that sort of thing. I think you look at the national level, you may, or even the state level, you look to parties, and you're looking for various different ways to decide about candidates. We're close enough that people know us. You know, I just don't see that we need to play too many political games at the local level, and we've got to work together. Washington's proven that, because they don't.
Mr. Schmeele?
Well, I was, I'm from a Republican family. I was a Green Party person for a while, and now I'm a Democrat, so I think I'm on the right team around Athens. And no one asked me to run, and I'm totally new to politics, so I have met a lot of people, and I've really enjoyed getting to know the Dems. And I think, yeah, on the local level, we're, yeah, in every level, we've all got to work together to get the job done, and yes, the partisan bickering and fighting, it's not helping the situation. We're trapped in the two-party system right now. I'm not a great fan of it, but, you know, that's the way it is. Now, when you get to the state level and you look at, you know, what's going on, I think you'll notice that, yeah, there's certain parties that are, you know, maybe cutting us at the local level a little bit more than other parties. So I'm proud to be a Democrat now, and my wife set me straight, so, back in college. And, you know, but I think we've got to keep the big picture in mind, and that means, you know, serving the community, and as a businessperson, I want satisfied customers, and that's what really matters. You're our customers, we want to keep you happy, so.
Question number six, to Mr. Schmeele to begin. What are the top three things that would make you a good commissioner?
Well, my tagline on this is, I'm creative, I'm hard-working, and I'm community-minded. And I've shown this in the way I've lived my life up to this point. You know, I've turned problems into solutions. Ohio, for example, is the birthplace of the tire. We have the world's largest tire piles, and why not build a house out of tires? Because it's energy-efficient, took a little bit of extra work, but it's great, and it, you know, that's an example. When you've got lemons, you make lemonade. When you've got pawpaws, you make pawpaw popsicles. You know, this is the kind of thinking that I wanted to bring to the table, because I feel like, you know, these solutions are there, so turning problems into solutions. And all these things, I think, have been examples of ways to make Athens County a healthier and wealthier place. So that's my mindset. I want to bring that to the county office. And, community-minded. When we buy pawpaws from people, we buy them from a lot of low-income people. I hang out with high-income people, too, at the farmer's market, that we're selling our cheese to. I like people. I like talking to people, and I'm into customer service. I've really enjoyed meeting people around the county, going to meetings, et cetera. I want to bring that kind of customer service to the Athens County Government, so.
Mr. Mace?
I think I will let you repeat the question.
What are the top three things? What are the top three things that would make you a good Commissioner?
Thank you. Well, in 61 years living in Athens, I've made a lot of silly mistakes. At some point, they start calling that wisdom, so I've got a lot of that. At least, I've made a lot of silly mistakes. Actually, I, you know, I think I have my experience, just as an Athens County, and I know, you know, with the, my responsibilities for addressing, there's not a little tiny piece of the county I don't know. I've been with EMS, I've certainly worked with law enforcement, worked with the fire services, worked in disasters, I've worked with charities, I've worked with private and public. I have public and private experience, many years of both, thankfully. Probably next, I would say, is the fact that I tend to not always follow the rules, especially if they're silly. I was somewhat known for that with the state and emergency management. They'd tell me to jump, but I didn't always say how high. I'd find a way around that actually made something work. Experienced in, probably in my campaign materials, I say, I'm looking for common sense, you know. The government, and I'm not picking on anybody here, but too often, I don't think the government really considers what boils down to common sense, so, thanks.
Thank you. Question number seven, for Mr. Mace to begin. What would be your number-one priority involved in creating a five-year economic growth plan for Athens County?
Number-one priority, five-year. Wow. To work, as I said, to work with the Economic Development Council, to work with existing businesses, to keep our ears to the ground about opportunities. Like I said, I, you know, that's one thing that I learned on all those trips to Columbus with people, is just, you know, if somebody was coming in here, I don't, I honestly don't know whether economic development people go and pick them up at the airport or whether they let them in a car, but I would try to make it a point to pick them up at the airport, because that hour and a half, two hours, is a golden time to extol the virtues. So I might take a little detour through Hocking Hills, although maybe Hocking County would get the business, so maybe that's not a good idea. But I think that working with the Economic Development Council is probably the number-one thing that has to happen, there are lots of other little pieces.
Mr. Schmeele?
Well, I, this, I hope this doesn't sound self-serving, but because I'm a part of the farmer's market and a part of the local food economy, I think I would focus on that, because we've got a lot of land around here, we've got a lot of farmers, and I think we've got some parts of the, pieces of the puzzle that we're missing. I personally would love to see a permanent farmer's market location, where we could have, you know, farmers selling stuff seven days a week. We produce millions and millions of dollars of, you know, revenue right now, like, six hours a week or less. So people are going to keep eating, and if we can keep that money in our local community, we shouldn't be sending it to Mexico and California and who knows where. In relation to that also, we need to do more value-adding. On our farm, we take all our milk, and we value-add to it, and we're actually manufacturers. So we take our milk, we don't just sell commodity, we value-add to it, then we direct-market it. That's how we, we're going to make the money, that's going to, you know, provide for a living for people. And one of the big things we're really missing in Athens County is a meat-processing facility. We've got all these farmers with beef cattle, and they just sell them, and they go away, and we're not doing any of that value-adding, and we're not generating the wealth that we could. So I'm a big proponent of the food economy growing, and I think we've got a good track record.
Thank you. Question number eight, to Mr. Schmeele to begin. What do you think is more important to a Commissioner? Private business experience or government experience?
Oh, that's really easy for me to answer. You know, I obviously think they're both important. I, as an independent businessperson who hasn't been involved in local government, you know, I've learned so much by going to the Commissioners' meetings, going to village council meetings, reading the County Commissioners Handbook, you know, learning more about how our local democracy works. Because here's the thing, folks, a lot of people don't know what county Commissioners do. You know, it's just not part of, you know, they're like, what do you, you know, I swear to God, 99% of the people I've talked to, you know, Lenny knows, he knows, but a lot of people don't. And so I think it's good to bring a little fresh perspective to the table, and that's what I think my candidacy is doing. But I take it very seriously, and I look at it as an opportunity to serve the public, and it's like an art, you know, but when I built a house, I didn't know how to build a house, I built a really good house. When I started mushing pawpaws, I didn't know how to mush a pawpaw, but, you know, we've turned in the world's largest pawpaw processor, and the same thing with the cheese. So for me personally, I think it's a great opportunity to, you know, get into a different palette to work with, and, you know, so I think it's important to have private experience. But, you know, it's great to learn and have a fresh perspective about government.
Mr. Mace?
I'm not sure if you call it a softball question or not, I have both, so. I, I think you need both, sorry. Because you need to understand what, I worked for Seams, which was a private corporation at the time, I needed to understand what it took to run a corporation. I've worked for The Messenger, again, and dealt with the things that have to be done as a private businessperson. I've also run a small marketing business of my own. So I, that's very valuable. And I've also got 20-plus years of government experience working for the Commissioners and with emergency management 911. So I don't think, I don't think either one is more important than the other, I think they're both important, and I get a good balance. So, thanks.
Thank you. Question number nine, to begin with Mr. Mace. What is motivating you to run for the Office of Commissioner?
Well, most of the motivation is the fact that I was asked. I was asked a couple of times in the past, and told them I was very happy being retired. But the presentation was made to me that at this point, with the government, Columbus and Washington cutting funds, that they needed somebody who could come out and do service. I think I've, you know, I'm trying to follow the, what I see as the founding fathers' model, you go out and you have your career, and at some point, you come back and maybe put in a few years working to help the government succeed. Not sure I have much more to say.
Mr. Schmeele?
Well, I think a lot of people are giving up on democracy. A lot of people, you know, they just throw their hands up in the air, and they're like, you know, screw it, I'm not even voting. But, you know, I think of my grandpa, who was in World War II, he was a tank commander in Europe. And, you know, he put his life on the line, all his friends got killed, and I just remember this one day, when he was sitting in the room, and he was crying, you know, and I just realized how much, you know, people have put on the line for our country. And I just don't think it's respectful to just throw our hands up in the air and say, you know, democracy's not working. So I'm the kind of guy that I'm willing to get in there, do some hard work, and I'm hoping to set a good example for my community. I feel like we do need more young people involved. You go around to a lot of these events and such, and there's, you know, the old crowd's there, but where's the young crowd, you know? So if we're going to make our county, you know, a success and grow and be positive, you know, we need to get people that are willing to work, have some good ideas, and care. And I think in Athens, we're lucky to have a lot of great people that are smart and care. So I personally, you know, felt like with my work in the community, I knew a lot of people, I felt like I could represent a mindset that cares, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Question number 10, to begin with Mr. Schmeele. What are your long-term goals related to political office?
Got 15 more minutes of this, and then 28 more days till the end of this election. So I'm taking it one step at a time. You know, it's really hard to say if I'm going to love or hate this job, you know, because it's really hard to please everybody, you know, and I'm kind of like that kind of guy who wants to have customer service and keep everybody happy. So, you know, I don't really have any long-term goals at this point. If it works out, you know, I feel like I would, you know, I would love to go to the State House and represent Athens County, but, you know, I think we've got some great state representatives right now. Debbie Phillips is awesome. So, you know, but, you know, one step at a time.
Okay, can you do that one again for me?
What are your long-term goals related to political office?
I'm not sure what "long-term" means. I don't intend to make political office a career, I don't think it should be a career. I'm not talking about necessarily stepping up, but I don't think, you know, if they put me in charge of the government, I'd make everybody one term, because I don't want you running the day you get elected, because I think that just cripples our system. Like I said, I don't have any long-term, I'm not planning to be, you know, good luck getting to the State House, but I don't plan to do that, I plan to stay here in Athens, put in my time, do the best job I can, and whatever my plans end up being, I don't intend to start running the day that, the day I get elected, not that Chris is, but I think that's a big, big problem that we have.
Question number 11, to Mr. Mace to begin. Do you think the 911 office should be moved?
Very probably not. I was, that building, well, I'll give you an example. Several years ago, when we were having a meeting in my office in the 13 West Washington, somebody called over and says, you're going to have to evacuate your building, because there's a bomb threat at the courthouse, and I kind of chuckled. That building is made to take anything but a direct attack from the folks across the waters. It has its own water, it has its own power. I don't see why we should leave a building that's that's well-built and that well-equipped unless we can replace it with the same thing, and we can't do that without building a new building, and I don't think we have money for new buildings.
Mr. Schmeele?
That's okay, I was pausing, I've got some time. I think there are other ways, you know, I think the sheriff needs to get out of downtown, and once we deal with that, then I think there's more room to reconfigure that with EMS, Emergency Management, and 911. And I have some ideas about some things we could do to help to get the sheriff out of downtown, whether whichever of the gentleman end up in the office, so I have some ideas where we can go with that, so, thanks. That's okay, I paused too long.
I don't see it as a huge priority, but I think we're going to have to see how, you know, the inventory of our buildings and our strategic planning goes. It needs to be cost-effective, and, because we don't want to be, yeah, like, building palaces if we don't have enough money for, you know, people to get paid, and training, and equipment, and such. So to me, I'd have to really sit down and analyze the options. I don't have any strong feelings about moving it at this time.
Thank you. Question 12, begin with Mr. Schmeele. How would you deal with officeholders who overspend their budget allocation?
Okay, well, I guess the county Commissioners were kind of in charge of the budget, so, I mean, the, I guess the buck would stop with us, and if you're overspending, there would have to be a request for that. So, you know, we'd have to have that conversation about why is this happening? And, you know, if it's needed, and they're overspending, you know, that's appropriate, that's great. If it's not, you know, we do need to talk about, is it a priority that we're overspending? And is there a way to do this for cheaper? And to not get into the overspending, because just like a business, we got to live within our means, and just like every family, so if somebody's being spending crazy, you know, that's going to affect everybody else, and so I think we need to be respectful of our whole team of people that are working, and make sure that irresponsible spending isn't happening.
Mr. Mace?
The best way to deal with overspending is not to let it happen. We need to make sure that we are developing a review process to know that we're 25% through the year, that 25% or less of the money has been spent. Keeping all the realities in mind, that might make fluctuations, and that that's the way to do it. And I would be very reluctant to, you know, in, having watched through the year, if somebody came to me and said, we're out of money for gas, or we're out of money for payroll, I'd be very reluctant to support them, I might have to, to get us through the year and maintain that stable employment, like I've talked about for the county. But the way to do it is to make sure, the way to deal with this is to make sure it doesn't happen.
Thank you. Question 13, to begin with Mr. Mace. What is your view about extending public transportation throughout the county?
Well, my understanding is that it's being worked on, I think it's a laudable goal. I understand that some of that may be grant money that we're coming in here. I think the one thing that concerns me, and has always concerned me since I've figured out how things work, is that grant money means that it was our money, and we sent it to Washington, and they took some of it away and sent some of it back. So I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not enough of a radical to say, I don't want grants. But I think when we develop programs based on grants, that we have to, I think they do look at the long-term implications, if we get a grant, can we keep it going? I've dealt with that at Seams, Seams was a grant-funded operation to begin with, and that eventually ran out, and we had to fight to get levies, and then that sort of thing. So I think it's a laudable thing for people who can't get into town and that sort of thing, but I think we have to approach these things very carefully and make sure that we can keep them going in the future, thanks.
Yeah, the Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Program, they're the main drivers of a lot of this transportation issues right now. They've got the Go Bus for going to Cincinnati and Club, and say Athens Transport. They've got some other programs with, like, just sharing rides and cars, and, you know, it's just really important for people, especially low-income people that are trying to get a job. There might be ways to develop public-private partnerships, where we could do a little bit of job creation, you know, at the same time, so I wouldn't mind seeing something like that happen, because then we wouldn't be reliant on grants, we could try to set up a model that would be affordable, but, you know, accessible to the people that need that. And, you know, things like the bike paths, and I know that there's conversation about extending a new part of the BNO Trail, so, you know, making other forms of transportation accessible, not just vehicle transportation, I think that would be healthy for everybody, as well as, you know, something that is affordable, so public transportation's really important. And if I'm elected, I'm going to be riding my bike to the office once a week, so.
Thank you. Question 14, to begin with Mr. Schmeele. In tight budget times, what is a bigger priority for you? Giving employees a raise or building new facilities, and why?
Wow. Raises, well, I guess we'd have to look at what the raise schedule was like, and how long have we been maybe putting off raises, or, you know, what's the schedule? We've got inflation to deal with. But, and then we got to look at, how important is this new building? Is it critical? Is it something that we really need to have? So I think it's just, you're going to have to weigh those things. It's obviously probably going to be a lot cheaper to give people raises than to build a big, big new building, because if I go in on building a building, I want to build a good building. You know, I want to build a building that's going to be energy-efficient, it's going to be, you know, a longstanding testament of quality. So if that's a simple answer, I don't know.
Mr. Mace?
Do that one again, just to make sure I've got it in my head. Do that one again, just to make sure I've got it in my head.
In tight budget times, what is a bigger priority for you, giving employees a raise or building new facilities, and why?
Well, having watched TV and watched various politicians on TV, I realize that many times you don't answer the questions that you're asked. Raises, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go to raises, I'm going again to stable employment. I think that's more important than building new buildings. It's always amazed me that governments and banks have to have the marble edifices that they build when much lesser facilities might suffice. So, I, you know, I'd say in every case, the stable employment is, and that probably involves raises at some point. But in a, in a, in a environment of shrinking income, and unless we can do the economic development we're both talking about, that's the way we, that's the way we raise our money because it's not going to come back from the state, and it's not going to come back from the federal government. So, the stability of the employment, I would say, is more important than building any new building.
Thank you. Question number 15, to Mr. Mace to begin. Will you be a full-time commissioner?
Yes. Absolutely. I don't have any other, I have been running a small business for the last 10 years, but since I've started the campaign, I've dropped all that. A little bit of it I've transferred to my daughter, but I'm, I'm not doing anything else but campaigning, and I don't intend to do anything else but commissionering. I just, you know, it, it's going to be a full-time job. It's, it's probably going to be very much like going back to work for 911. It's a 24/7, 365. I hope it's not quite that bad, but if it is, I've done it, and I can do it again, even at 60, almost 62. So, that's about where I need to go.
Mr. Schmell?
I hope to be a full-time commissioner. Right now, as a small, independent farmer, I work long hours. So, like, this morning, I was up at 6 o'clock putting milk in the cheese vat. So, you know, long days are something that I'm used to. I do want to keep my business going. We do have some great employees that we're elevating in stature. We're all waiting to see who's going to win this race because I really am not going to talk about that until, you know, the day's over. But, yeah, I mean, I'm actually pretty excited about being a commissioner, so I guess I will have the passion to do as best, as best I can. And so, I will probably be working long days and long nights because, you know, when you get into something, you want to do a good job, you're going to put the time in that's needed to, to accomplish your goals. And, but I also, you know, feel like it is important to keep my business going and be a part of the community in that, in that sense too, but I will be delegating a lot of those tasks to our employees and probably hiring a few more.
Thank you. We have some time remaining to go back to questions from the media. Those will be in the reverse order, beginning with Sarah Brumfield from the Athens Messenger.
I think I did those last time, but if I can refer to, I don't know what else was left to ask, unless you guys have questions prepared.
I've got, I've got something. How would you ensure as commissioner that you would work with all of the townships in Athens County and all the political subdivisions and make sure that you're representing all of the citizens of Athens County?
And this would be Mr. Schmell first, and then Mr. Mace?
Well, I've been around to a lot of different events and councils and township meetings, so I've started the, building those relationships already. And I've, I've heard a good idea from actually Gary Guzman, the mayor of Amesville, to, you know, if I were to get, be elected, you know, let's get all the mayors together, and let's sit down and talk about how we can, you know, learn from each other and work together, possibly, you know, there's ways that we can collaborate, save money, et cetera. Something else that I think is, is worthwhile that a lot of the, the local elected representatives aren't participating in is the, up at the Ilgard, up at the Voinovich Center, there's programs available for small communities in southern Ohio to come there and get, you know, training from other elected officials. And at this time, Paul Wile goes and Gary Guzman. So, I think that, you know, we could encourage that and try to get, you know, more participation. You know, but basically, being out there in that, in their, you know, in their areas, talking to the, the citizens, hearing what's going on, and then talking to the representatives and making sure that, you know, there's nothing scandalous going on, and, you know, monies aren't disappearing and things like that. So, you know, basically being in the game and showing your face, shaking hands, and, you know, listening to people.
Mr. Mace?
I'm probably going to keep doing what I've been doing since I started running. I've been to all 14 township meetings at least once. I've been to every village and council meeting, city council meeting, with the exception of Chancy and Coolville. I had planned to go to Coolville tonight, but I couldn't be there and be here. Basically, with Chancy and Coolville, I have not been able to work the schedule out to be at their meetings, although if I get, you know, I may get there before the election, but if not, if I get elected, I'm going to be going to those. I am telling all of those people, I think it's important that we know each other's faces, we know each other's names, and I'm going to be back there at least annually, probably more often. I'm going to encourage that sort of cooperation between the commissioners and the township trustees and the village councils, the various people that are involved in that. I've also been to, and I intend to, intend to keep going, to almost all county departments and agencies to make sure that I know what's going on there, to know that they appreciate, that I appreciate their missions and what they do for the county. And I'm seeing my, the sign that scares me, so I'll stop there.
Thank you. At this time, we have run out of probably the questions rather than the time for the questions. We will now hear the closing comments from the candidates, beginning with Mr. Schmell.
Well, thanks a lot for coming to listen. I, I hope you feel my passion and love for Athens County. My family's here, I'm not going anywhere. I feel like my work as a, as just a regular citizen, I've contributed a lot as a civic leader. The Paw Paw Festival's like a great, you know, example of how working together, we can make this place, you know, healthier and a wealthier place. And I've really enjoyed going around the county and learning about local, how local government works, meeting the people that are doing the work, and I hope to set a good example and get more people involved in government. I want to make Athens County government more user-friendly. Ideas about maybe a meeting nights instead of during the day, possibly improving our website, you know, getting into stuff like Facebook, making it X more accessible to the young people because democracy's important, and we need to make it, you know, accessible and more, get more people involved. And on that, on that vein, I, I like what the, the fracking committee has done, that's brought together diverse ideas and, and, you know, brought together ideas to consult for the commissioners. I think that there's other venues that need that kind of participation, including the, the dog shelter and the solid waste district. So, I see these are areas where people have a lot of passion, and, you know, we should use that passion to help make Athens County a better place. These people care, they're, they're basically doing like free consulting work for the county, and I think we should take them up on it and, you know, make Athens the best place we can. So, I appreciate your consideration for your vote, and I really want this job, and look, I can even dress up, and I'm serious about this.
Thank you, Mr. Mace.
Soon as I get up. I'm a little slow in that respect. I've told you who I am, I've told you what I've done. Thank you for being here, by the way. I, you know, with all due respect, I think I have a better resume than my opponent, and I, like I told the gentleman who was most against running, in the running for the 911 job at the, at the time that 911 was started, I said, I think I'm going to beat you on resumes, and I did. And I think I've done an excellent job working for the county. I think I've, I'd like to point out that out of the, what we did with 911 in, in Athens County, there was a clump of nine counties in southeast Ohio that was just an island of counties that didn't have 911 service in Ohio. And since we started it here, it went to Hocking County, I helped them a little bit with that, it went to Washington County, and now every county has at least some 911 service. I think Megs County's a little bit on the, on the slow schedule, but everybody else has got 911 because me and other people, I didn't do it myself, but we started that, and that's, I think that's, I, I, I hope that it's a really good thing for people. You know, I've been involved with EMS, I was on their board, I was the president of their board after I left the corporation. I helped them through one financial crisis that nearly put them out of business. Here's my sign again. And I did that when, when I was on the board, I also did it while I was in the executive order of the, of this corporation. So, I think I've got what it takes, I understand what needs to go on, I can hit the ground running. With all due respect, I don't need training, and I've been at every commissioners' meeting since I started running, with the exception of one when I was sick. Actually, I've been there more than the incumbent in my time zone. Thank you very much.